Ready, Deb?
Okay.
Good evening. Welcome to the Breezy Point Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I will call the meeting to order and ask if we have approval of the April 9 minutes.
I move the motion.
We have a second?
I second it with the corrections that I gave to Deb already.
Okay. We have a motion and a second? Any discussion of that motion?
No, it was a very good meeting.
Thank you. Thank you for saying that.
Why wasn't here?
Right. Exactly. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Council liaison report Michael isn't here, but we have the mayor and we have Jerry, and so it's well covered.
Michael Maudie is the liaison.
I can wing it. And if you have some questions, maybe you can ask the council members. I believe the council approved the plans and advertising for bids for the Papago Suffolk White Birch Improvement Project. That's a sewer and road project. They approved quotes for crack sealing of city streets. They approved the hiring for a police officer to replace one that's leaving. They approved preparation of a feasibility study for sanitary sewer service to Conservation Club. They approved the release of the funds for the Caparu development, which means it's substantially completed as far as the city part of it is concerned. And with that, I think that was the highlights.
Great. Mr. Mayor or Mr. Councilman, do you have anything to add to the report?
How was the golf court ordinance for golf carts amended? That was part...
Yeah, the changes that were made to the golf cart ordinance were required by the county ordinance that was passed allowing golf carts on county roads. So our current ordinance prohibited golf carts from the county roads. So we amended it to allow the golf cart to be on 39, 11, and 4.
City streets as well?
Sorry.
City streets as well, other streets?
It's always been allowed on city streets.
Okay. So it's just on the county roads?
Right. It's always allowed on city streets for the last 30 years, as near as we can tell.
Yes. I wonder if you're making any changes to that?
No. Not at all. The ordinance was written, the county ordinance was written such that we had to tell them which county roads that we wanted to allow golf carts on. We did that two months ago, or no, the previous meeting, and passed a resolution saying we want golf carts on 4, 11, and 39. And then last week, we amended our golf cart ordinance to allow golf carts on county roads.
And there are no registration forms or orange triangle or anything?
That's already there.
That's there. But then that carries over to the county roads as well?
Right. Well, the county says that the municipality has to have a statute or ordinance that controls the golf carts. In other words, they have to have a licensing that meets certain requirements. Part of that is the slow moving vehicle, et cetera. There was another one minor change that we added in that our rules that we would hand out to people getting golf cart license prohibited golf carts on Bushman, but for some reason we didn't have the ordinance. And so we don't have golf carts on Bushman because of narrow shoulders and the up and down. So we've always prohibited.
Good job, and you did better than Crosslake did with their golf carts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other questions about the city council move? Peggy?
No.
Curious?
No.
Okay. We'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is open forum number one. Would anyone like to speak? We're honored by Gary Bocken, Councilman Bocken being here.
You already did the recognition, so I don't have to. 29464 Shore of Mill Lane. Thirty seconds. Number one, I'd like to applaud the planning commission for the job they've been doing. Not blowing smoke. It's nice to see a good, solid commission working, and I'm very proud of you and happy to serve with you guys.
Thank you.
Number two, I want to address the Ephron project going on. And for the record, I am in support of Keith improving his facility. Couple of caveats I have for suggestions he can make in developing the facility. There's no better time than this evening and now to control what's done across the street. I only hear rumors and I understand Keith is more than happy to screen it, which it needs to be because of the complaints that the city's received over the years on the facility being a little unkempt, if you will, and especially the folks burying their families in the cemetery. So I would encourage the planning commission, which is able to set parameters, I would like to see screening and adequate screening on the east side, on the north side, which is the cemetery side, and on the airport side, all the way down to the existing hangars. And that's all I have to say. It'll be nice to see the new building in place. That was a terrible thing to happen there, but it's, I look at it very positively now we can make something nice. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
One of the things that's going to be on the agenda tonight is talking about changing the ordinance allowing multifamily units to be on the commercial property. One of the things that came out of the specific business community was, number one, they wanted workforce housing. Following that, I've been just kind of looking up and, you know, some inquiries as far as where do we allow rental housing? And it turns out, we don't have it. There's only one place in Breezy Point that allows rental housing, and that's Outlot C. Everything else has already been built up. It's the R4 district. And Outlot C is basically right behind Antlers. It's right in the middle of the golf course, and it doesn't have any access to it. There was an old archaic plotted road in there, but that road has never been developed. So it's kind of an island. The common sense would say we could put it into the commercial areas because we have the commercial areas, for the most part, sewered. So that would be an opportune place to put it. The other thing is that we want to make sure when we discuss it that we're talking about workforce housing and not affordable housing. The buzzword affordable housing is usually spoken of in accordance with the Affordable Housing Act, which means the developer has to have a certain number of units reserved for people below a certain income. Okay? And that's not what we're talking about. So we want housing that's affordable for the workforce, the workforce that's needed by the resort, obviously, as well as the other businesses here in Breezy. And the argument that the business community was giving was, they have a hard time finding people because there's no housing here in Breezy Point. We literally have no rental housing available. And so this is going to be one of the first steps in implementing our new comprehensive plan. So just giving you an update as to what you're going to be seeing and what is on your agenda for tonight. If you have any questions, feel free to, you know, get ahold of me. You can get ahold of me on Wednesday mornings from 8 to noon if you want to plug in for that.
Would you be willing to answer any questions right now?
Absolutely.
Any questions?
So the commercial on 11. There's several places on 11. That was one of the things. Because ideally, a good place would be right next to Landisky or big vacant areas up there. And started looking at it, that would be a perfect place for an apartment building. Okay? It has close access to 371. And it's currently not being utilized. And that's when I started looking at where do we allow rental units? And that, you know...
But then if you would have proved that, wouldn't you be right? You'd be coming all the way down 11 and all the way to the commander.
It's not all commercial along 11, but there's quite a bit of it, yes. But it's not all big enough plots for a...
Have there been any developers that have shown some interest?
We have, as part of the tax forfeit lots and stuff like that, we've had developers coming in and saying, "Well, if I got four lots, can I put in a fourplex?" and this kind of stuff. That's where, you know, initially, some of the things started showing up. So I want to at least be able to address the business community, saying that we want, you know, workforce housing, which would be, you know, like a multi-unit apartment complex, as well as, you know, fourplexes and those type of things.
Since the commercial district does kind of string out down 11, is it possible to, at least for the time being, have just part of commercial, divide commercial up? In other words, so part of it would not be for housing? And I don't know if that's practical. I'm just trying to think of...
I was going to say that is possible, but I don't think it would be too practical to divide it up like that. A lot of the lots just aren't large enough for an apartment, but it would be for, you know, a gift shop or something like that, that type of thing.
And I presume that as we looked at doing something like that, changing the land use map, we'd be looking perhaps at some kind of ordinance work for like height limits and elevators for, you know, two stories and that kind of thing?
Right. Yeah, all that stuff is covered under, you know, the fire assisting. But, you know, however, if it is like a conditional use permit, that we can set the height limits and that kind of stuff.
Mary?
Thinking on that is true. The, by the time you build a new house and you try to get it affordable, I mean, and again, the builder's got to be, a builder slash investor's got to be looking at what is the demand before he decides whether he wants, you know, really fancy three-bedroom places or whether he wants to have some ones and some twos. Because as I said, what we're looking for is, is something that, like you say, that the workforce would be able to get in, and then it's up to the builder to do whatever he's got to do to get to that price range.
Right. And that was one of the, that was one of the big drawbacks, was the cost of construction nowadays. A single-family home is very, very difficult to build and make it affordable for something like workforce housing. It's just totally impractical. You just can't build it to that price. And so, and plus, the workforce tends to be somewhat transient. They want to have a rental place. They might be here for nine months or something like that during the season.
And again, we're not like, just Breezy Point. There's Pequot Lakes is close to here, too. So I mean, they would probably be having individuals that would be looking at something in this area, too. And they've even crossed lake. They've got some buildings over there, but they're kind of...
Yeah, and that was kind of what, when I was reading in the paper, you know, that they're talking about workforce housing. And that's a little farther, you know, farther away. But we could be having something like that, you know, if we have it allowed in certain areas. And that's what kind of tickled me to look through our requirements and find out that, you know, we only have one area, which is, and that's controlled by White Birch, so...
In preparation for that, too, you've got, the builder's going to kind of come in and want to know, you know, what are the income? If you're looking for a place for somebody who's just a waitress, they'll say, well, they're not going to be able to afford it. They're probably looking for at least a fair amount of middle-to-high paying jobs. I don't know if we have that or if you've even got that data.
Well, the developer, whoever comes in, I'm assuming, would do his homework. And he would be building a unit that would be affordable to the average worker. And in your packet, you have a thing that I got from one of the meetings I was at, and it was put out by the Groving County HRA. And that packet basically went through what are the needs and what are the income levels? It's fairly recent. I think it's from 2018. And it talks about, you know, how much per hour the average person would be making in this area and what would be affordable for them.
It certainly demonstrates why we're hearing what we're hearing from the employers.
Yes. Very definitely. And with the increasing, you know, with the increasing economy, we're actually seeing, you know, for, you know, for the business community. And if you look around, or looking for workers...
Help wanted signs everywhere.
Help wanted signs everywhere.
And businesses closing because they can't find people.
And isn't really the issue, we just don't have any land that they could build multiple housing on?
Well, that's, that's what we're...
I mean, it's not, we're not going to do the market study anymore, what you could do, but there's nowhere you can do it as it sits right now.
That is correct. And that's...
That's what we're looking at, isn't it?
Yeah, so if we can say, okay, commercial district, conditional use permit, we'll control it. We will basically allow a developer to come in and, you know, we're not going to support him, you know, subsidize him or anything like that. And he's going to say, okay, I've done my homework. I can make this so much per square foot, and I'm going to charge so much rent, and it can be affordable by the people that work in the area.
Is there any TIF money available?
No. I would not, I would not support using TIF to build an apartment building, and I don't think you can unless there was, you know, unless you did it under the Affordable Housing Act, which I don't, I would not want to do that.
Wouldn't it make sense, too, though, considering our geographical placement, that anything we do in terms of workforce housing, we would be working with the communities around us? I don't, we're small enough that we don't want to compete with Pequot Lakes or Crosslake. We want to complement whatever they might be doing.
And, you know, that's why, you know, when I was originally thinking hotels, vacant lots out there on county road 11, right near the Landisky, that'd be a perfect place because it's right near 371. They could, you know, hop on 371, go up to, all the way up to Pine River if they want to. Because there's not a whole lot of rental housing in this area. I'm just trying to be proactive and be basically be the first one on the block and say, you know, hey, you know, bring us your business.
Good work.
Thank you.
Mr. Gear?
Gary?
May I advance?
Absolutely.
Woman in the pocket, three. I thought I did pretty well last night.
You did more than 30 seconds, so let the record show.
Those are Norwegian seconds. I just want to piggyback on what the mayor had to say and also compliment him for his foresight. And that's exactly what the city needs. After three planning commissions that I sat on, they were crying for it back then. Fast forward to almost 30 years later, they're still crying for it. And even more so with a vengeance. And that's what we heard on the research, saying that, on the comprehensive plan, portable housing and apartments. I can tell you without a doubt, I have been involved for the last year and a half. There's four airport, new airport homes being built. Reason, because of desirability of this community, and they're not chintzy stuff either. It's all high-dollar stuff. Additionally, I can tell you without a doubt, and I've talked with them, there are people who are very interested in doing just what the mayor talked about. Very interested. And I'm sure they have the means to do it. I looked up the proof in the pudding, and I said, "Show me." And they did. So it just suffice that I support this 110 percent, and the mayor has some good ideas. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I will close open forum number one and move to the next agenda item, which is preliminary plans for development of airport storage property. Jerry, you want to guide us into this discussion?
Sure. Sure. After the last planning commission meeting, there was concerns expressed, or at the last planning commission meeting, there were concerns expressed about the condition of the property that is known as the airport storage. And it became, ever since the trees were removed, we've, we now see a vacant area back there that has a lot of materials, I should say, that are stacked up there. After the last meeting, I went and I talked to Keith, the owner, about the condition of the property, and he was gracious enough to go through with some plans for some future development and also the replacement of his existing structure that had been damaged by the snow in the last winter. In your package, I did ask him for some kind of a plan, a preliminary plan, that is included in your package. He has been very good about coming forward and giving me the plans, talking to me through the process, and we're, I think it's kind of a project in waiting and in process. Since that time, I, knowing that it was going to be an issue at this planning commission meeting, I asked Keith to come, and he can share with you any thoughts that he has about what he'd like to do with the property or what he's proposing to do. I, you know, the plans that you have are very, very preliminary. It's more of a concept than anything, and he assures me that we will be getting some plans in the very near future that are more concrete than the ones that we have today.
Jerry, can you give us some idea of what our approval responsibility will be with this?
Well, there's a, that's an interesting scenario because he can replace the building that he's, that he's got without any, any issue. I believe he can replace, he can build a new building with a building permit. Fences that are less than six feet in height do not require a permit. I think that we do have some, I don't know that we can force the screening, but I think it's, I think we can make a case that screening is necessary for that type of an operation. It's not a conditional use permit by any means. It is basically an authorized use in that zoning district.
Keith, do you want to give us a little bit of a background on what your plans are?
Thanks for seeing me. Apologize for, I guess, the issues that my property has caused. Ideally, what I would like to do is I would like to put up a building on the north end of the property, approximately 60 by 200, and run a fence in between. It would be building three and the proposed building, both on the east side, which would be along county 11, and then on the west side, along the airport. You know, I had always, I always intended to put a fence up there. I did not realize that a solid fence would be needed. I have no issues putting up a solid fence, six feet high, that will match the buildings that are there and the proposed building that would go up. And hopefully, that will alleviate any issues with people coming out of the cemetery or in the Downski Shalae and Weaver Point Drive. I've done my best to try and keep the area out there that was cleared, organized, and decently building. Everything is in rows. The boats out there, some are, all of them out there are waiting to be worked on. The pontoons will be rebuilt, and we have a number of boats along the north side of building three. Some of them are, some of them need to be torn down, any useful parts taken off, and some are waiting, donor boats waiting for me to get around to getting the parts that I need off of other boats. I realized that I had about 14 boats out front for probably a good nine months last year. They were all waiting to be basically parted out and scrapped, which I did over the course of the winter and parked a few trailers on back, which are for sale. I've sold probably nine trailers this year. So I'm trying to, trying to minimize the amount of items that I have out there that are in plain view. Guess I was under the misunderstanding that I was zoning down there. And I'm talking to Jerry, and something like, I'm just on the airport, not sure why. Kind of throws a little bit of glitch in my plans of replacing building two, the one that was damaged in the snowstorm. Setbacks are a lot different. So I was hoping to talk to you about a variance for a 20-foot setback from my property, I called building two, as well as the proposed. I would call building four a 20-foot setback rather than a 35-foot setback that's on the airport. Staying with the 35-foot setback from Ski Shalae, as well as county road 11. As soon as, and I apologize for my crude drawing. It was, Stone Mart was supposed to have done a complete survey of my property, and all they did was... So there was some argument with them, and they kind of don't want to deal with me and anything else. So I will, I will submit a two-scale drawing to Jerry of the building permit applications for replacement of building two, as well as the proposed building four. And as soon as, as soon as that's approved... And as soon as, as soon as that's approved and they can all start drilling holes for posts, I will have them drill a hole along the airport side as well as County Road 11 side. So I can start setting posts with the fence. Ideally, I could have the fence up as soon as the buildings are completed. And again, like I said, it would be the same color as the buildings.
Do you have in mind, Keith, that this would be cycle fencing with those screening slots in them?
No, what I propose is wood posts with two-by-four purlings and steel, same as the buildings. So it would not be, you would not be able to see through. So everything, everything back there would be sealed, all the outdoor storage.
Then on both the Ski Chalet side and the County Road 11 side?
I would use the Ski Chalet side of the building, proposed building four on Ski Chalet side as a fence.
And that one is, you're looking at a 20-foot setback versus 35 there?
Across the rear on the west side. I would agree to the 35-foot setback on Ski Chalet.
You want to, you need to be back a little bit enough so that you don't inhibit the line of sight for traffic to, so you gotta be, if you get too big of a fence and got too close to the roads, you're not gonna be able to see cars very well.
Yeah, I don't see this. My, my fence in what I call my compound where my office and shop are is, is on the property line. My proposed fence would be running off the northeast corner of building three to the southeast corner of the proposed building four. So it would be approximately 25 to 35 feet back. I would also like to regrade the front of the area from approximately the corner of building three all the way down to Ski Chalet. So it would make it easier for the snowmobilers and the groomer to come through.
And it would look better too, I think.
Yeah, I think it would look better too. My biggest problem there is Great River Energy, they have a post there. And they're more or less extorting me for about $13,000 to move it. So if anyone knows anyone on Great River Energy that can help me, that'd be great.
Keith, would you mind answering a few questions?
Sure, my problem.
Well, first thing, I want to compliment you on the area that you have beside your office. That's kind of a nice looking area. I like that.
It's taken a number of years to get you there. It's a constant, it's a constant work in progress.
Anyway, so if the whole thing looked bad, it'd be funny.
I will definitely work on that.
Anyway, anyway, compliment. But I have a question about airport commercial. It's my understanding airport commercial forbids used car lots. Is that correct?
You want to repeat that question?
It was my understanding, and I cannot quote song and verse, that airport commercial zoning specifically forbid, forbid used car lots. I realize these are boats, but... Well, maybe that, okay, we need to do a little research. I've got to tell you, one of my concerns is coming out of the cemetery, that red bus just stands out. If the, if the red bus weren't there, half the problem would be gone.
That, that red bus has been a bit of a thorn in my side. My plans are to remove the engine from it and send it up to Grand Walker's recycling yard.
Anyway, so we need to, or I need to research that and find out about that. But the concern I had had was actually primarily the view as you come out of the cemetery. I know you can't, you're not going to be able to screen the whole thing. And I know, you know, you should be, we're trying to encourage businesses. So we don't want to discourage all of it. But that would be an area that I hope somehow be...
Yeah, and I do understand. I'm very aware of the fact that when I did open up the area by removing the trees and starting to grade it out, it did expose some things that were very well hidden by the trees. When I took over in 2002, the city expressed great concern over the condition of the property. And gave me some time to remedy about 20 different items that they had. And it took me a little bit of time, but I did clean up the area. You know, all 16 boat carcasses that had been deposited in the woods as well as six dumpsters full of trash out there. I vowed that I would not let it turn into that again. And I do, you know, I do drive through the area and I do see, I do see where people have some concerns over the unfortunate view that was opened up. Like I said, I am trying to keep things in a neat order and the fashion there.
Well, it looks like you do a great job on, until the time your roof collapsed. That was unfortunate. Thank you. That's all I got right now.
Jerry, do you have a question?
Yeah, I mean, we're looking at all this fence. Is there any way that we could, you just ripped out a bunch of trees. Can we plant some trees on the other side of the fence, you know, on the roadside of the fence? I mean, I think...
Probably could, yes.
Because I mean, that's a lot of the issues where people are saying, I say, if the city's getting complaints about looking at this stuff, I don't know, but I guess you're getting some complaints about what it looks like with all those trees gone. It would be, I think it would be a good image type thing to say, you know, plant some trees on the street side of your fence and just so that people can see that, yes, we're trying to get some vegetation in there as well.
I'm not against that.
I don't think it has anything to do with your property, but all the trees that were just recently cut down, I assume...
Well, there's someone on both sides, is what it...
Well, but the south of your property, they just leveled the whole. And I'm assuming that was the airport that did it. And it was also my understanding that it may have been because the FAA was on their case for trees getting close to the runway. But I don't know if that's true or not.
But did they need to...
Yeah, unless you speak to that, I mean, just briefly. Exactly right. The FAA has been after them. And it's because of the postman landings, they had, they had to come down. Just like the trees in the cemetery, like, so I would caution, if you're going to build trees or plant trees, not the ones that grow high. Short pine trees, for example. The FAA is different.
And do you, does anybody know, and it isn't part of this issue, is the airport planning on putting hangers on this side of the road as well? Do you have an answer?
I can't speak to that. They can do what they want. It's airport property. And I would not be surprised that they do use that space for what it's designed for. Other than that, I can't say one way or the other.
Thank you.
I'm simply the way she's on.
I do have fence panels like I have. So, so these are my property. I place fence panels along there that cannot see through. They're six feet high. I have enough to do my east fence and I have every intention of doing that. Backside, I think, a little more presentable as well. I had, I had proposed to Jerry that I would be placing some trees in between proposed building four and the city property line, or I'm sorry, the city setback. Just because I do understand that it does butt up against a residential area, albeit a small one. But, you know, I, I want to be as good a neighbor as I can and still be able to run a successful business. Need to grow just a bit. I have a one-man operation, so there's going to be so much I can do. I just was looking to add a little additional outdoor storage and building that could accept some RVs and larger vehicles. Again, that'll be proposed. The building would be proposed to Jerry and I suspect that it will go up in front of the planning and zoning committee.
Thank you.
I was just, was going to comment about the trees because I had heard that too, that the trees were cut on that side. So there would be concern about what was put up on the other side in terms of the FAA.
Exactly.
So anything, and even the fence. I mean, you know, that all is going to have to come under the purview, I would guess, of making sure the FAA is not going to be unhappy with it and make you start tearing stuff back down. The other question I had is maybe for Jerry. You know, if he thought he was commercial all the time, was there a change in the zoning ordinance or he just was not clear?
At the time that the airport zoning was created, rather than having the little notch of commercial out in that corner, it was changed to airport. The actual setbacks that he's talking about basically are the same in commercial as they are in the airport. There's no difference. Actually, enclosed storage is an approved use in the airport zone. I think that was created, when the airport zone was created, that those uses were included to include the uses that were already in and around the airport. The airport, it doesn't affect his property one iota. Back in ancient history, there were a couple of variances granted for rear yard setbacks of three feet from the property line for the existing buildings. Now, unfortunately, it didn't get built to those three feet. But that was used back in ancient history to get those buildings closer to actually the airport property line and the south property line. But the setbacks don't change, didn't change at all.
Okay, that was my question. He's within all of what's allowed already.
Roger.
So your proposed 180-foot building is going on a 210-foot distance, right? That's what it says, 210.
I'm sorry, I believe that was 240.
Is it 240? Oh, it's 240, okay.
Sorry. Again, I apologize for the drawing.
Okay, that's 240. So it does give you enough for a setback. But the shed will be 14-foot sidewalls, I would assume.
I would love to have 14-foot sidewall.
You're putting a motorhome in it.
Yeah.
That building is actually your fence.
The north, north edge of the building, I would like it to be the fence. And then that gives me 35 feet in between the building and the property line to place some evergreen trees. I do like evergreens because eventually they fill in and cover quite a bit and they don't lose their leaves.
You show, you show a proposed fence in the northwest corner from the building four to the west lot line, approximately?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any thought that instead of a six-foot fence, it could be an eight-foot fence? Just bringing it up.
An eight-foot fence needs a conditional use permit.
Okay, well, okay.
Did that ran along the runway?
No, no, I'm talking about, this would be on the, on the...
Not this one?
This, this, right, right here.
Oh, that little, that little section.
Yeah, yeah. If that were eight foot instead of six, it would... The problem with the elevation and coming down the hill out of the cemetery and all that stuff, you're still going to see it. If you're coming down Ski Chalet Road, you're still going to see inside. But it would reduce to some extent. Anyway.
Keith, most of your storage, I assume, will be between the proposed building and the building that exists right now. In fact, where Tracy's talking about is pretty low, right?
Yeah, I, you know, in going back and looking at that with the gentleman who's going to be building the buildings, I would probably not go to the property line. I'll probably go off the back edge of proposed building four and run it north-south and connect where the north side of building three is. So I, it just, I would have to haul in, I would probably have to haul in another 150 to 200 loads of dirt to get the elevation high enough for the fence. So...
I guess my question, Keith, is that most of your stored, outside stored stuff would be between those two buildings anyway and would be screened by the buildings?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Except for there's going to be trees in there too.
Trees.
Trees in there.
Did you see, you're going to put some trees between the buildings?
No, no. I would, I would put trees along the north side of proposed building four on Ski Chalet because that...
Yeah, I thought just a minute ago you said you'd be, you're going to put some evergreens between those buildings. That's going to screw up your storage.
No, between, between proposed building four and the lot line.
Okay.
To the west.
To the north.
It would break up some of that steel.
Yeah, and I don't have an issue with placing some trees. I like gardens, so I had kind of planned on throwing something nice on the corner. Anyone else?
You've got to compete with the beauty of the cemetery. Maybe there is trouble.
I got to, I got to compete with the recent women's club out here. They do a phenomenal job for, for us.
None of the residents of the cemetery have ever complained.
Good. Appreciate that. I'll stop by and thank them.
Any other questions of Keith? We're obviously going to continue to discuss this. So we'll have other opportunities when you bring more specific information to us.
I hope to be able to submit actual plans to Jerry within the next week to 10 days.
And when do you hope to do it?
Huh?
And when do you hope to do the work?
I hope to have the work started before the beginning of July.
Oh, okay, great. Well, thank you for coming in. I appreciate you coming in.
Yeah, thank you very much, Keith.
And again, I apologize that this matter had to come to this.
Well, there was, there was no animosity or anything like that among the group. I, you know, I think we just had, when stuff started to happen, we just had questions.
And I do understand that people were complaining. And I find some of the complaints valid, so. Other than, other than the complaints from the people in the cemetery. Other than, other than the complaints from the people in the cemetery.
We appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Keith, any other discussion that anybody would like to have on this? Ready to move? The discussion of multifamily rental housing in commercial C-zone. I think the mayor's done an excellent job of helping us understand this. The information you provided in our packet is really eye opening.
I was prepared.
Okay. Oh, I thought that was information you received at a-
Yeah, the thing that I got from Corwin County that I was prepared.
Oh, okay.
Otherwise, everything else is coming right straight from our conference last evening.
Yes, yes.
So I think at this stage, what you're looking for is you can have this going tonight essentially on, if you would want to move forward on this, and then the next thing would be to set a public hearing. Move forward on that.
Well, let's ask that question of the members. Is that appropriate, Gary?
You're the chairman.
Okay. Roger?
Oh, yeah, definitely ask the public hearing on it. I agree with Tom on the plan to the west and maybe this stuff over right along 11 here is too small, but I've seen apartments go on pretty small pieces of property, you know, as they go up.
But the problem is, they can't go up unless it's a zoo.
Right.
Yeah, in commercial.
And you control the size, you know, the conditions on the-
Except that, C and B.
So Roger, are, are you in favor of us moving forward?
I, I think so, yeah. I walked in here with nod, but Tom kind of, when he brought up the stuff to the west, that opened my eyes. The rest, I thought, Jesus, too close, you know? Then you'll have the people saying it's, I don't want it in my backyard, which you will anyhow, but.
I assume Mr. Spieso's development would be a prime spot for-
That's, that's a possibility, but right now he's talking about, you know, commercial sort of hotel system. I'm not sure about that. That hotel, that's long-term clients kind of across the street. That would be, you know, that's so commercial there. You want to build a hotel, right now is the point.
Absolutely in favor of having multi-housing and commercial.
I, I agree. I think it's a great idea.
I agree 100 percent. I think we ought to move ahead and do whatever is necessary to get the process moving.
The consensus clearly is full speed ahead.
Oh, here comes the voice of the-
I do believe consensus is that we should move ahead with a public hearing. A public hearing would be on an amended ordinance or the amended C-section of the, the zoning ordinance, which would include a, as a conditional use, multifamily dwellings. That would be the next step for the planning commission to hold a public hearing on that amendment. After the public hearing, the, the planning commission could make a recommendation that the council adopt that amendment. In this case, with a zoning amendment, you are the recommending body, you are not the, the officiating body. So that would be the next step and staff would prepare a, an amended section of the zoning ordinance for you to consider at that public hearing. We'll schedule a public hearing for the next meeting.
I was going to ask that question. We can do it by court.
Yeah, it should, that, it's pretty, pretty easy.
We'll figure out a July meeting.
We will have a July meeting.
You've got, now, at least two issues, I do know.
Great. So then, do we need a motion to?
I, I think not, I-
We've got direction. We can, we can schedule.
The minutes would, would say that there is consensus among the commission members to move forward with the public hearing.
Question, is it the commercial or is it the limited commercial vote?
We do not have limited commercial anymore.
Oh, this isn't right.
But it answers the question.
We just have commercial.
I see it up there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Councilman. This is exciting. Progress.
It is? Bravo.
Yeah. Next item on the agenda is other. Do we have other here?
We do.
We do, yes.
We have another. Mr. Clemmer is here.
Yes.
Mr. Clemmer owns the property that is located at 9311 Breezy Point Drive and that property was damaged by fire. It has since been removed. Mr. Clemmer is allowed to put a structure back up on the same footprint because it's a non-conforming use. It is too close to property lines by our guidelines and that type of thing, but under non-conforming uses, he can, legal non-conforming uses, he can We got some preliminary drawings from Mr. Clemmer showing what he was proposing for that piece of property. And then we, I asked Mr. Clemmer to show us some, if he had a picture of what was there before because the, the, the building is gone. In your packet, you have a copy of that, those pictures that were provided. Because the building that he is proposing is a different style, it's on the same footprint, but is a different style. We didn't feel comfortable approving that without it going in front of the planning commission for their review and possibly their blessing. Again, it's on the same footprint. It is just a different style of building. They tell me that it's basically the same square footage of livable room. It does look a lot higher because of the balcony up on the third floor or on the, on the roof. With that, Mr. Clemmer is here to answer any questions. I do believe he's got some other pictures that he might want to show with you or share with you and maybe you have some more pictures or maybe you have some questions for him. We just, as staff, didn't feel comfortable approving it without your review.
I think it's a little bit more accurate because all the pretty greenery, it was pretty But I am Jack Clemmer. My wife Nancy and I moved out of home on, burned down on May 23rd of last year. I apologize that it's taking this long to get to you guys, but we've got some pretty major insurance issues that we had to work through, which now have resulted in we are here. As Jerry said, we're, we're building on the same footprint. Actually, there was one on the picture of the survey that you got, there was one portion that was jutted out about four feet that we're just eliminating. It was about four feet by 15 or so of the old structure, where it's kind of a rectangle. That was to the west toward the beach larger than the building. But this is what we are hoping to do. Again, it's within, you know, probably 50 or so square meters of the previous structure. The previous structure actually had four different finished levels. This has two. Of the picture that I just showed you, there's one spot like a wall on the roof. That actually is just a stairwell to get to that rooftop deck. So that, there was a, one that I think, there was a thought that maybe that was finished space other than the finished interior stairwell.
A way to get to the Elvis deck.
Get to the Elvis deck, yes. It's funny you say that because if you guys were, we had a little sign in the, since the fire, that said, you know, for more information, text something to me. And we sent out a survey to all the people that had texted. There were like 1,000 people and just asking, you know, ideas on colors and other things. And one of them were names to keep the same name of Lake Seilon or change it. And there were a few people that said, you know, Elvis Lookout or something like that. I don't know if we're going to go with that, but.
Are you, are you willing to answer questions?
Yeah, best I can.
Let me start at the other, at Roger's end.
Couple of quick ones. The height is higher than the Elvis. Does that matter, Jerry?
Well, that's, that's part of the dilemma and why we didn't feel totally comfortable because non-conforming uses, you're not supposed to increase the volume and that tends to increase the volume a little bit because of the, the way the structure is built. We didn't think it was significant, but yet it does. We do have a 20-foot, 20-foot, five-foot maximum height at the shoreline anyway, so he's got to adhere to that. And I believe they're, they're really, you know, close to that at midpoint.
At midpoint, yes.
Midpoint of the roof.
That's right, you go midpoint.
Right. If, if it was strictly 25 feet to the peak, yeah, I think it's about four feet higher than at, at the peak.
What was the old cabin in our house?
That's a very good question.
I'm just trying to ask, but I would say-
We need to measure the heights of our homes. We can only estimate.
The estimated was probably pretty close to what you're proposing now.
The color scheme does, that's cottage look, I guess.
It doesn't have cottage look. That's the difference.
What do you mean chalet look?
It doesn't have a chalet look. It's got a cottage look.
Is it going to be blue on the outsides? That, you don't know?
Like your shirt.
Ask his wife.
Thank you. As of last night, that's what she felt most comfortable with. And that actually, in that survey, was the, the color scheme approximately that was recommended or people liked it the most. And since it is, you know, it is in the resort zone, it's a rental, a vacation rental, I wanted to meet what our people suggest.
Have you had any reaction from the resort?
The resort actually gave us the plans, so we've adapted them a lot, but, but it was originally modeled after their boathouse. And then we actually switched the, the roof around 90 degrees and did some other things.
So obviously, they're happy with-
We've talked to the resort a fair lot about what, you know, because we, we hired them to manage for us. So we've talked to them a lot about it and they give us suggestions on what we should do.
Sure.
The rooftop deck being one of those.
I, I don't know that it is a reasonable question to ask how many will sleep versus how many did the old cabin sleep, but on the number of bedrooms or how many bedrooms were in the old one and how many bedrooms are in the new one?
Yeah, the, the old one had four bedrooms that we utilized. There was one other kind of loft bedroom that we eliminated from use just because we just, it was pretty small and I didn't think it was safe to be, frankly, right? This one, because the old one had a kind of a loft area that you could overlook, we eliminated that interior loft area and it's six bedrooms. It's actually going to be about the same number of people because the bedrooms are a little bit smaller, so there were some pretty large bedrooms that was, you know, that had two queen beds and things like that and people.
What was the non-conformity?
It's too close to property lines. Too close to OHW.
Too close to the water.
Too close to the OHW also.
Okay. Does this, do these- And it looks like the deck deck will be substantially larger than the old bedroom, so it'll be closer to the lake, not so?
No, it's, it's identical.
Actually, we have a survey, I don't know if we included the survey in your packet, but we do have a survey showing what the old dimensions were and that's, we will make sure that that adheres to that.
Thank you. All right.
I got a question, Jerry. With this rooftop deck, it's kind of nice. Will we start giving more requests for variances for rooftop decks?
I don't know that that's not allowed. I don't know that you need a variance to do
Is, as you look at the house from the road, is the lot on the left your lot?
Where the, where the sign is?
Yeah, so, so they just started the small cabin. That was torn down because of the fires though and ours is, you know, easily to the left.
So the one that started is the one that-
That's not.
Oh, no.
We should, we should have started with this.
We went by there and I said to Tracy, well, we, we better hurry up and give input. There's already a foundation. That's what I, that's what I was thought.
That was the cabin, the whole, the whole cabin and that was just started and ours is-
Should we be looking at that too?
That one is basically the same as the, as the old one, yeah.
And that was the one that burned. Yours was damaged, right? Or yours burned and the other was damaged?
The other was damaged.
Okay, that puts a whole new light on it because we all thought it was, he's already started in the ground and now we're going to be taking a look at it. Okay.
Now, and the reason it's on the agenda, it's before you tonight is that we met with Mr. Clemmer last week and the, the agenda had already been made out and, and we just figured that let's get it in front of you as soon as possible so that he can move forward with this proj, with this project if you, if you give your blessing.
The other structure, you don't think will be an issue?
No.
Is, is the other structure going to, do you know if the other structure is going to be similar or?
It is, it is not as high as this. This, this is, the, the change in this structure more than anything else is the style of the house. And basically the style, the old style was an A-frame or two A-frames put together basically. And in this, this kind of mimics more modern styling than what was there.
Part of that was part of the issue too, was just the, the insurance. It was just so cost prohibitive to do what we needed with it.
Don't I remember that being an issue with the fire too, that that, the materials for that, the shingling and so forth was a real issue and so fast?
Well, it was, it was wood. It was a wood siding.
Wood shingles.
Yeah, wood shingles. I don't know if you guys had heard, but I had a couple of questions about the cause and there was actually, so there was the Pequod Fire Chief, a Fire Marshal and two private fire investigators, one by insurance company and one for the building next door. And the consensus amongst all of them was it was smoking material that caused it. They don't know who.
Dry wood.
Where are you going to put the no smoking sign?
We had those. And I was just telling the story that while the Fire Marshal was there with the Fire Chief, they both had their trucks there labeled and a guy walked by and tossed a cigarette right at their feet while they were having their discussions.
What are you going to do? I don't hear any reservations from, from the members. If, if I'm wrong, please say so.
Well, I, I don't, you know, we've said before, we aren't an architectural review committee. And there is a myriad of different styles on that road anyway. It would be not my choice architecturally at all, but if this is what he can do. Also, if the resort actually has bought into it, to me, their place might be adversely impacted by it.
In fact, that Mr. Spizzi said he.
Okay, and he, and he does, or they do, you said this was their suggestion.
Yeah, so I talked to them and they said if you could rent the house, that would be excellent.
Except for when it's.
Right at the edge of the marina.
One on the east side of the green. Right next to the boil.
Well, thank you. Any, any further reaction input?
I'm sorry you have to build a new place, but it looks like a nice one.
Thank you. Open forum number two.
Do we need to have any kind of official protection? Do you don't need? Okay, sorry.
Anything that you can think of, Jerry? Wait.
It was a good meeting tonight and we learned a lot. I was in the same boat you were. I thought that was a, what the heck's going on? Footings entering. But I, you weren't alone. I was with that too. I would just, back to the airport and storage buildings. It rests in your hands. You control it, believe me. And I've been down the road there and talks cheap, but it takes money to buy whiskey in Texas. So you folks control that and now there's no better time than now to make that the best looking place that there is.
Gary, let me ask you though, if we don't have anything to approve, there, do we control it?
I believe. As the zoning administrator, you can, you can suggest, you're going to, one that's going to issue the permit, you're going to approve it. So it behooves you to take this, in my opinion, and correct me if I'm wrong, to make it look better than it's looked for the last 30 years here.
If we do have control or some control, when we, we require the resort maintenance shop to have a fence, yeah, you were still on the.
I know.
To have a fence higher than anything that they store.
The screening?
In there.
Treating, is it? I remember it very well.
Was that part of the CUP though?
Yes.
It might have been a CUP, yeah.
This is a CUP?
That's the beauty of the CUP. Oh my God, they are the best tool in planning history as far as I'm concerned. But I just encourage you to, to encourage him to do it right. Eight, 10 foot or eight foot instead of six. He didn't balk at that. He flinched a little.
But it is a dip down there, he said. So if you put an eight-foot fence, it's still going to be.
I understand that. I'm talking eight foot all the way around. You make it consistent.
He's talking the end of the building. The building is his.
That side, yeah.
Well, the building will serve as a very good.
And that I understand, yeah.
But I would like to know the answer to my question. Does airport commercial restrict? I thought it specifically.
It says private motor vehicle sales of two or less annually are allowed.
Okay, does that imply therefore that private motor sales of more than two are not allowed?
That's, that's what it implies.
Okay, now, is a motor, let's say a motor vehicle or motorized? Could you, could you construe that to boats as well if they have a motor on them?
I don't think so.
Well, what did it say? What does it, what does it say?
It says private motor vehicle sales of two or less annually.
So they can't sell, they can't sell more than two motor vehicles. So when he gets rid of his bus, he's getting.
Well, he's not going to sell it as a scrap.
Well, I don't care what he does with it, but I don't, I don't think the intent is to have it parked there. And he's got a bunch of stuff that.
Parked.
Parked it. And if he's going to use it for parts, he may have to live.
That'll be parked there forever. Remember the junkyard on Bushmore Road? It's still a junkyard.
Okay.
Look at Shipman, for God's sake. Same thing. Oop, small. Shipman Auto Parts and bring it much larger scale, but the same thing. They got cars that have been sitting there 20 years now. They go out and get a spark plug off one and sell it to somebody. Simplest.
So Gary, do you see us having the, the control that Gary is suggesting?
I, I don't know the answer to that question, quite frankly. I, I, I think that Keith has been very good about coming forward and, and I think he's shown a willingness to, to work with them, with us. And I'm hoping it's going to go forward.
But also the point that Gary is making is if we're going to have any requests, this is the time to do it. We can't do it after he's got stuff.
I, I honestly don't know without talking to the attorney whether that we have anything more than, than approval of buildings. If in fact he wanted, he wants to do a fence that's more than six feet, then that requires a conditional use, then you've got a different issue.
We ought to, we probably would approve the conditional use or maybe yellow conditions if it were eight feet at our request. Then can we put other conditions on them if we're the one who forces him to make the fence eight instead of six?
I think reasonable conditions could be placed if, if in fact he applied for a conditional use permit.
He doesn't want any, he wants a six foot. So why would he apply?
I.
He wouldn't.
What did he want? When he gets us two different things. Remember, it's he needs cost consciousness.
Oh, absolutely.
Of course. But again, I reiterate my point simply to this commissioners. There's no better time than today to take care of it or live with it for the next 30 years.
I don't think I.
That's my point.
But don't you think, Gary, that's the approach that we're going to have to use? What I hear.
It's fact of the matter, approach. What do you, I don't understand it. No, your premise.
If we don't have an ability to acquire.
In other words, we can't demand he put up an eight-foot fence.
Okay. Have you got a definitive answer on that yet? No, you don't. What we can do is suggest.
Right, that's.
Suggest. And if you want to cooperate with the city, I would suggest, you, there's two, you know, you don't, there's no point in getting the hard nose about it. But believe me, I have experience with, 30 years with this gentleman and he always has not, he's not always done what he said he's going to do. And I'll walk you right around and show you the two takings of the property in the airport. Remember, first of all. And other ones. So when he says, I'm going to clean it up, I've been waiting for 25 years for it to get cleaned up. Now is the time, folks. And you can suggest to him, we'd like to see an eight-foot fence. Now, we can't make you do this, however, that's what we like. So if he's willing to cooperate as he's indicating and I'm hearing that and I'm all for his project, it's his livelihood. By all that's holy, you're going to make it good for the city or limited. Sorry. 30 seconds again.
Well, if I can chime in here, what I'm hearing is we're asking for a quid pro quo. Anybody that asks for a quid pro quo in my government, I will totally oppose. We do not do that. That's blackmail. I don't want to try and do that. If you say, I want you to put it up, if you want this, okay? No, we don't do that. And I will totally oppose that. He does not have a conditional use permit that you can enforce. So if he wants to put up a six-foot fence without a conditional use permit, that is just fine.
It should actually be.
Absolutely. We will not.
Totally agree with it.
We will not try and force him to put up an eight-foot fence and have him get a conditional use permit. End of story.
That's exactly what I meant about.
Yes, totally agree with it. But I think we should because we do not do.
No, Gary, what we're seeing is we're not going, this is, this is the time, you know, we're not pushing. All we're going to do is this is what we'd like to see and that's.
I understand.
And that's where we can go.
You can suggest as well.
And if we're nice, maybe he'll be nice and maybe give us 80% of what we want.
I would, I agree with you.
If he doesn't change his setback, he can go ahead and get a permit, build that building without seeing us.
It looks.
What is fence on? A six-foot fence on.
It looks to me.
I think that the new building is going to solve a lot of the.
I do agree. I wasn't aware of that new building. Yeah, I agree. Absolutely.
That's going to be, that's going to be a 10-foot fence and more.
And more, yeah.
12, 14 foot.
The bigger issue for us may end up being getting some green in there to bust up the look of all of that steel.
Suggestion again. You know, it's, I need to do it.
Well, as it stands right now, he's planning on coming back with his more formal plans. Is that correct?
Yes.
Which will give us an opportunity for.
Suggestions.
Yes.
Questions and whatever.
Well, I think this discussion is good because we need to be prepared for that. You know, we're, we're going to have to use some diplomacy in that, in that process.
It's going to cost him money no matter what, so he's not going to jump at it automatically, I don't think, but I'm guessing.
Exactly, yeah. Anything else under open forum number two? If not, I will close open forum number two and adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody.